The decision is now called order. May I request the honorable member of parliament, Syait Abdul Wahab Pak for the invocation. Please remain standing for the invocation, National Anthem and the Bangsa Moroim.
Bismillah, Rahman, Rahim. Allahumma As-salim wa as-salim ala siidina Muhammad. Walaa alihi wa sahbi ajmain. Robbana al-zalamna anfussana wa illam tagfarlana wa tarhamna qunna min khosirin. Robbana innana sami'na munadi yunadi lil 'imanee an aminu bira'bkum fa amanna. Robbana faghfirlana fainnaka antaghur rahim. Warhamna fainnaka khil rahim. Allahumma la ta'dadana thzamban pi hazal maqawm illa ghafarta. Wala mri'dan illa shafita. Wala haman wala ghaman illa farista. Wala dainan illa qadiita. Wala hajja tan min hawajjina fi hazal hayaa. Illa antana'a laqda'a ya Robbalan. Allahumma nasa'aluk antu'izna wa tansrar muslimina fi kuli mekan. Wa antu'aliya bifadka kalimat al-haqi wa din. Wa antashmalab i'gina'atika war'i'atika wa hima'at ikhwana mujahidina fi Palestine. Allahumma ansur ikhwana mujahidina fi Palestine. Allahumma ansur ikhwana mujahidina fi Palestine. Allahumma aktublahumut taufiqawannasr. Walfutuhata fi kuli maharakatin khaduha ya Robbalan. Wassalamu ala siidina Muhammad. Subhanallah rabbika rabbil a'isati amma isipun. Wassalamu ala mursayin wa alhamdulillah robbal.
Mga kababayan ang pambansang awit ng Pilipinas. Ang pambansang awit ng Pilipinas. Kayang magiliw, kerosang sira'hanan. Alam ng puso sa diti koy buhay. Upang pinira, uyan ka ng magiting. Saman lulupe, ikapasisi il. Sanagatang tutok sa sipoyat, salami kong pagkao. Ayuna tamtulakaw, isa kong kayang minamahal. Ang isakta kuwa kawat, uyan ka dun kayna kini. Ang kituwi na taro ngakayna, pamayna matinili. Luwana paraw ngangwar, habib pa'sin ka. Uy nabi't sa bibigbo. Ami migaya napakaywa ngapi. Alpamakay na, kahil sayo. Simula on hanggang ngayon, isa ang naging layon. Makaisaan pagunglon, karitingan ay paguton. Mayunayon ulas sa hamon ang nakaraan. Iyakusang paganib na buhanlan. Inagatusang puso at paliniwala. Ang ihawang para sa kabataan. Bangsa Moro ay damuntay. Bulan ang pawis subo at buhay. Kabayapan, katabukan, ay atin ang nakantay. Alhamdulillah, alhamdulillah. Pagpalay bangsa Moro. Bangsa Moro, bangsa Moro, lagi kang mamahalim. Walang pipigil sa damdamin. Mga pangako'y tutuparin. Halag buhay kami sayo'y magbalatay. Mananatili sa puso ti sipan. Ang kaha kung munim, layhan ang buis ng buhay. Nasapiing ka ng may kapal. Bangsa Moro ay damuntay. Bulan ang pawis subo at buhay. Kabayapan, katabukan, ay atin ang nakantay. Alhamdulillah, alhamdulillah. Pagpalay bangsa Moro.
The secretariat is directed for the roll call. Roll call, honorable members of BTG Parliament. Abbas Akmad, Abbas Harun, Abbas Basit, Abu Mujib Alamiya Liza, Alauden Mosber, Ali Ibrahim, Ali Lanang Junior, Ali Eddy, Amoluto Suarto, Aminuddin Abdullah Jiz, Ampatuan Bahintan, Anayatin Susana, Antao Muhammad Kelly, Arnado Marian, Asnawi Dan, Babau Ali Montaha, Balindong Pangalian, Handaw Bay Maleha, Dilanggada N Hasimi, Dumama Al Basia Elaiha, Ibrahim Ahud, Ismail Suarto, Estino Matarol, Gayak Abdullah, Gera Edward, Tadsi Abdullah Khalid, Hasim Abdullah, Hasan Hatimil, Iqbal Mohager, Ismail Rasul, Jajuri Raisa, Jakilan Muslimin, Chikiri Albakil, Kahalan Ben Martin, Karun Faisal, Lim John Anthony, Loong Benjamin, Loong Don Mustafa, Lorena Jose, Makakuwa Jamel, Makapaharab Dola, Makasalong Marjani, Makatanong Amrosi, Maglangit Tarhata, Malik Hamid, Mantawul Bailing, Mastura Esyahak, Matalam Japarapolo Mikael, Awalil Amil Bahar, Endosa Freulin, Mitimbang Michael, Mitimbang Tawakal, Miswari Abdul Karim, Miswari Nur Reda, Mitmo Gressul Junior, Munius Hussein, Oranon Soib, Pakasam Obaida, Pak Abdul Wahab, Tangandaman Nabila Margarita, Parkasir, Ramos Jamila, Salindab Syaid, Salik Ali, Sanki Ali, Semao Mariaser, Semar Romeo, Sheikh Syaid, Sirongan Aida, Sinulinding Kadil Junior, Sulaiman Ali, Hago Paisalin, Tan Nabil, Usman Azpar, Utu Basir, Uyoyod Si Tifahani, Yakub Muhammad.
Alhamdulillah, wabihinas ta'ayin, assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Mister Speaker, on the basis of the roll call, we have forty-six members of the parliament responded to the call. We therefore certify Mister Speaker the presence of Gorom in today's session. Thank you, Mister Speaker.
Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Dahil sa pagtatalaga sa akin ng ating pinakamamahal ng Bangsa Moro Transition Authority, and in view of the certification coming from the Secretary General, I now declare that presence of Gorom.
Bismillah, Rahman, ni Rahim. Mister Speaker, Attorney Pangalian Balindong, to the Honorable Deputy Speaker and Presiding Officer Attorney Paisalintago, Deputy Speakers, Floor Leaders, Members of the Parliament, Secretariat, Staff, and Guests in the gallery. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Mister Speaker, before I proceed with the order of business, Mister Speaker, I would like to inform the body that we have visitors from the Ministry of Finance and Budget and Management who will be observing the today's session in relation to the filing of the 2025, fiscal year 2025 Chief Ministers Budget. And they are Attorney Rahmasang Litan CPA, Director III of the Bangsa Moro Budget Office; Attorney Rasul Salik CPA, Attorney V of the Legal and Legislative Liaison Division; CTI Saaratuk CPA, Chief Budget and Management Specialist of the Budget Execution and Preparation Division.
Stand kayo. Stand so that we can recognize you. Can you please stand so that we can be recognized in the parliament? Mga 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 tanyo.
Okay. Datu Gilmikan Si Harun, Chief Budget and Management Specialist of the Budget Technical Division; Jeffrey Q. Ngada CPA, Chief Budget and Management Specialist of the Local Government and Regional Coordination Division; Alamedha Hajim M. Andong CPA, Chief Financial Management Specialist of the International and Other Finance Division; Salem M. Barat CPA, Supervising Budget and Management Specialist, Budget Execution and Preparation Division; Amera R. Makararab CPA, Supervising Budget and Management Specialist, Budget Execution and Preparation Division; Aleya B. Mcmood CPA, Supervising Budget and Management Specialist, Budget Execution and Preparation Division; Najib Bantuas CPA, Supervising Budget and Management Specialist, Budget Execution and Preparation Division; Momenak K. Lampatan CPA, Supervising Budget and Management Specialist, Organization and Systems Improvement Division; Angelika May M. Gasa CPA, Supervising Budget and Management Specialist, Budget Technical Division; CTI Sa Di Matunday CPA, Supervising Budget and Management Specialist of the Local Government and Regional Coordination Division; Austria U22 CPA, Supervising Budget and Management Specialist of the Budget Policy and Strategy Division; Abdullah Rahman Es Alongan, Public Relations Officer III; Roslini Porowa, Technical Staff; Mashhood M. Agassor, Technical Staff; Mansur Kamsa, Technical Staff; and Amir Hassan Pida Tumanong, Technical Staff, Mister Speaker.
You're welcome to the parliament. Sila 'yung naksunukkilay para maprepare 'yung... naksunukkilay para... for the preparation of Bangsa Moro expenditure program. Maraming salamat.
Mister Speaker, we also have guests from the municipality of Datu Bla, Sinswat. Can you please stand?
From the municipality of Datu Bla, Sinswat, can you please stand?
Thank you, Mister Speaker. Mister Speaker, I now move that we dispense with the reading of Journal Number 13 dated August 19 to 2022, to 20 to 2024 sessions.
There is a motion to dispense with the reading of Journal Number 13 of August 19 to 2022, 2024 season. Do I hear any second? Yulisikandeh, there being no objection, this same is hereby approved.
Mister Speaker, I move that we approve Journal Number 13, subject to style.
There is a motion to approve Journal Number 13 of August 19 to 20, to 22, 2024. Yulisikandeh, there being no objection, this same is hereby approved.
Mister Speaker, I move that we recognize MP Jamila Ramos to deliver a commendation message.
Member of Parliament Jamila Ramos is recognized for the message. Member of Parliament Jamila Ramos is recognized for the message. Yeah, number nine.
Alzubilahim Nishetani Rajim, Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala wa barakato. Sa ating butihin, Chief Minister, Ahoat Palawag Ibrahim. Sa ating butihin, Parliament Speaker, Attorney Pangalian Balindong. Mga opisyalas at kasama ng BTA Parliament, ang ating mga panauhin at mga tagasubaybay ng ating live session. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala wa barakato. Mister Speaker, buli po akong tumatay 'yung ngayon upang magbigay parangal at magbigay pagkilala kay Binibining Mahmuda Aziza Bati para sa kanyang mga natatanging tagumpay bilang isang dalawang putatlong anyos gulang na Muslim student scientist mula sa San Jose del Monte Bulacan, Philippines. Si Binibining Mahmuda ay nagbigay ng karangalan sa Pilipinas, lalo na sa ating mga Muslim. Hindi lamang sa rehiyong Bangsa Moro o sa bansang Pilipinas, kundi maging sa buong mundo sa pamamagitan ng pagkapanalo ng gintong medalya sa kategoryang Life Science Category sa World Youth STEM Invention Innovation two thousand twenty-four na ginanap sa Kuala Lumpur, Malaysia, noong July two thousand twenty-four. Bukod dito, Mister Speaker, nakakuha rin siya ng apat pang espesyal na parangal mula sa event na'to. Ito ay ang mga Platinum Award sa pagsumkit ng Best Project College Category, Semi-Grand Award for her research sponsorship, Best Innovation, and Best Video Presentation. Mister Speaker, si Binibining Mahmuda ay isang graduate ng Alternative Learning System. Ngunit ito ay hindi naging hadlang upang siya ay magsumikap, mag-aral, at makatanggap ng maraming parangal sa pambansa at pandaigdigang competensyon na tunay nga namang nakapagbibigay inspirasyon sa lahat, lalo na sa ating mga kabataang Muslim. Mister Speaker, siya ay kasalukuyan nag-aaral sa Bulacan State University, kung saan siya din ay umani ng ibat-ibang parangal sa akademya. Her accomplishments include being one of the top-ranking students in her program, receiving the International Luminary Award in Academic Leadership, being named a Student Researcher of the Year, and on top of this, she is also a recipient of the Natatanging Kabataan sa Larangan by the Sangguniang Kabataang Muson. Academic achievements, Mister Speaker. Miss Mahmuda has also participated in various international competitions, winning numerous awards, including Gold Medal at the Hong Kong International Science and Technology Expo two thousand twenty-three in Hong Kong; Best Young Inventor Award at the Seoul International Invention Fair the Asia-Pacific Science Invention Festival two thousand twenty-three Researcher Award two thousand twenty-three, which was conducted online. Mister Speaker, sa mga impormasyong ating naliko na pag-alaman natin na ang kanyang ama na si Ginoon Mutahir Said Bati ay isang Muslim mula sa bansang Pakistan at isang retiradong negosyante at pharmacist na siya namang naging pangunahing impluwensya galing ang science at magsumikap na maging isang scientist balang araw. Ipinakita ni Binibining Mahmuda, Mister Speaker, ang kahalagahan at pagsasama ng agham at edukasyon upang lumikha ng mga makabuluhang motibasyon na maaaring makatulong sa batang Muslim. Speaker, karapat-dapat lamang na bigyang pagkilala at parangal si Binibining Mahmuda. Ang kanyang tagumpay ay isang halimbawa ng kababaihang Muslim na nagtatagumpay sa larangan ng edukasyon, research, at sience sa international na entablado. Nung ba ay pagpatuloy pa, nating kilalanin ang pagsusumikap, galing, at tagumpay ng bawat kabataang Muslim. Maraming salamat po, Mister Speaker. Wa billahitoufik wal hidaya. Wassalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala wa barakato.
Waalaikumussalam warahmatullah. Nandito ba siya? One minute, one minute break. One minute break to give before the adzan. Floor leader. Uh, session resume.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. Next is Bills on First Reading. We have one for today's Order of Business. BTA Parliament Bill Number three hundred forty-one. May we request the Secretariat to please read the title and the author?
The Secretariat is directed to read the title and the authority of Bill Number one, three four one, Bill Number three four one. BTA Parliament Bill Number three hundred forty-one entitled "Unact Appropriating Funds for the Operation of the Bangsa Moro Government from January one to December thirty-one two thousand and twenty-five and for other purposes." Author, the government of the day.
Mister Speaker, next is Proposed Resolution Number six hundred and forty-nine. May we request the Secretariat to please read the title, the names of the authors?
The Secretariat is directed to read Proposed Resolution Number six four nine together with its titles and the authors.
Proposed Resolution Number six hundred forty-nine entitled "Resolution in Support of the Motion filed by the Bangsa Moro Attorney General's Office and Other Individual motions before the Supreme Court regarding the exclusion of the Province of Sulu from the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region in Muslim Mindanao." Authors, Members of Parliament, Bayantan Ampatuan Khalid Tadji Abdullah, Jamila Ramos, Sitifahani Uyoyod, Liza Alamiya, Michael Mitimbang, Japara Polo Mikael Matalam, Rasul Ismail, and Basir Utu.
Mister Speaker, I move that we consider Proposed Resolution Number six hundred forty-nine as a simple resolution.
There is a motion to consider Proposed Resolution Number six four nine as a simple resolution. Your lisigandeh there being no objection, the same is hereby treated as simple resolution.
I move that we recognize MP Bayantan Ampatuan, one of the principal authors.
Member of Parliament Bayantan Ampatuan is recognized as one of the principal author.
Thank you, Mister Speaker, Floor Leader. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala wa barakato. Mister Speaker and esteemed colleagues in this august Parliament, it is my honor to sponsor Proposed Resolution Number six four nine. Mister Speaker, among the powers and functions of the BTA as laid down in Section Four, Article sixteen of the BOL, the BTA shall enact the priority legislation determined parliamentary for the first regular elections for the members of the Parliament and the organization of the bureaucracy of the Bangsa Moro Government during the transition period. Subsequently, the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region has established offices with requisite facilities, employed staff, and exercise oversight and control over programs and projects within its jurisdiction, including Province of Sulu since the effectiveness of the Bangsa Moro Organic Law. But unfortunately, on September nine, two thousand twenty-four, the Supreme Court promulgated its N-Bank decision on the case of the Province of Sulu et al versus Medjoldea et al GR numbers twenty-four, twenty-two fifty-five, twenty-four thirty-two forty-six, and twenty-four thirty-six ninety-three, and ruled that the BOL is constitutional but excluded the Province of Sulu from the jurisdiction of the BARM after the province rejected the law's ratification in the plebiscite. In response to the Supreme Court ruling, the Bangsa Moro Attorney General's Office, as the legal counsel of the Bangsa Moro Government, filed at October one, two thousand twenty-four, a motion for leave to intervene and to admit the attached motion for partial reconsideration before the Supreme Court. Under the rules of court, particularly Section One, Rule nineteen, it is provided that any person who has a legal interest in the matter in litigation or in the success of either of the parties or an interest against both or insows the situated as to the adversely affected by the distribution or other disposition of the property in the custody of the court or an officer thereof may with leave of court be allowed to intervene in the action. Also under the same rules, particularly Section One, Rule fifty-two, it states that a party may file a motion for reconsideration of a judgment of final resolution within fifteen days from notice thereof with proof of service of the adverse party. The Bago officer in charge, Attorney Muhammad Al-Amin Julkiply, said in an interview that "For us in the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region in Muslim Mindanao, there is a special circumstance because there is a case that was filed in two thousand eighteen. The BARM was not yet constituted. When it was already pending in the Supreme Court, the BARM even though it has already been constituted was not formally implied, meaning throughout the light of the case, the autonomous region itself was never a party." He also clarified that as written in the judgment, the Supreme Court decision is immediately executory and not final and executory, which means that there's still room to resort to legal remedies such as motion for partial reconsideration. The motion for leave to intervene filed by Bago is its way to request the Supreme Court's permission to allow the Bangsa Moro Government to be part of the case despite it not originally being involved in the proceeding. Aside from Bago, several members of the Bangsa Moro Transition Authority Parliament have also filed similar motions before the Supreme Court. On October seventeen, two thousand twenty-four, BTA Parliament Deputy Speaker, Attorney Liza Masood Alamiya, filed a motion for leave to intervene with an attached motion for partial reconsideration before the Supreme Court. She argued that excluding the Province of Sulu from the Muslim Autonomous Region would disrupt the ongoing peace and development efforts in the region as it contradicts the longstanding socio-cultural cohesion of the Bangsa Moro people. Furthermore, on October eighteen, two thousand twenty-four, BTA Member of Parliament Engineer Don Mustafa Arbizon Loong together with MP Azpar Usman, Attorney Nazir Inawat, Attorney Jamarkulayan, Nasr Arbizon Loong, Modyabi Camar Barak Obtulong Lupasug, and Attorney Mo Rap Tunggupon Berg also formally submitted a motion to intervene and a verified motion for partial reconsideration before the Supreme Court. They argued that the exclusion of Sulu directly contradicts to the Bangsa Moro Organic Law, which was designed to unify the historically and culturally connected areas of Mindanao and the Sulu Archipelago into one cohesive Bangsa Moro region. They also outlined in repetition how the Province of Sulu would be deprived of essential funding and development programs critical to its future, further stating that in the twenty-two forty stating that in twenty-two forty, the Ministry of Finance, Budget and Management, or MFEM, allocated over four point five billion to support seven thousand eight hundred seventy-two positions in Sulu's ministries and offices. Mister Speaker, the Supreme Court decision, as soon as it becomes final and executory, will completely remove the Province of Sulu from the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region or jurisdiction, which will have significant impact on the offices established, the associated infrastructures, and the personnel employed therein. More importantly, the Province of Sulu's exclusion will entail legal, financial, and administrative, and social changes that will have power-reaching implications to the entire autonomous region. Absence its absolute finality, the decision's immediate implementation could cause instability and confusion in the region, which could have serious effects for the Province of Sulu and its residents as well as for the region's larger governance and peace-building initiatives. In addition to its legal significance, the Province of Sulu's strong and deep historical and cultural ties to the Bangsa Moro identity and struggle makes it to the Bangsa-Moro identity and struggle makes it an integral part of the Bangsa-Moro. Without the province of Sulu and its people, the Bangsa-Moro would never be the same. For this reason, I mentioned above, I humbly recommend that this parliament concur with the passage of this resolution. Thank you very much. Wassalamualaikum, rahmatullahi taala wa barakatuh.
Wa alaikum shala, rahmatullahi taala wa barakatuh.
Mr. Speaker, I now move to open the period of interrogation and debate.
There is a motion to open the period of interrogation and debate. Yuli she candid, the same is hereby approved.
I move that we recognize MP Joselo Rena, Mr. Speaker, as the first interpreter.
Deputy Plurleader, attorney Lorena is now recognized.
Uh, Lira Rachmane Rahim. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Plurleader. Uh, while I support the idea of expressing our support for the motion for reconsideration, I have some clarificat- the motion for reconsideration filed by the Bago. Uh, so if the gentlewoman would, uh, accept some clarificatory questions, I'm ready to ask.
Yes, uh, Mr. Speaker. I'll try to answer as much as I can, Mr. Speaker.
Uh, madam, uh, Mr. Speaker, was the filing of the motion for reconsideration by Bago stems from an act of the parliament?
Um, Mr. Speaker, I think, um, it's, uh, an action of the, um, the, uh, uh, executive or government, um, because, uh, um, Bago was created by the Bangsa-Moro Transition Authority and their uh, responsibility is, uh, to defend and, uh, um, argue cases in Bago.
Thank you. But, Mr. Speaker, with all due respect, perhaps we miss the minutes of the, or the transcript of the proceedings of the BTA because in one session, four persons delivered a privileged speech in this floor and consequently, there was an interpolation and that interpolation was raised no less by MP Rasul Mitbog, of which this humble representation was asked directly. What is our way forward? And my categorical answer, if my memory still serves me right, then we have to ask the Bago, the government of the day through the Bago to file a motion for reconsideration. On that note, I think if my memory still serves me right, MP Rasul Mitbog moved that this parliament approved that resolution. Uh, so in order that we will not miss on technicality, that the petition for the motion for reconsideration was that Jul- was that, uh, did not emanate from the parliament, I hope then the gentlewoman would allow an amendment to include that particular process in the parliament because any action by the Bago, although created by this parliament, must have the authority from the parliament. This is an expression of support, but the filing of the motion legally requires an authority from the parliament. So I hope, uh, in the period of amendment, the gentlewoman would allow that in the one of the whereasses, we should include that particular incident in the parliament. Less, we might miss the point. In fact, I was discussing that with, uh, Bago, uh, attorney Jolkiply even before the filing because it has to emanate from the parliament. I hope, uh, MP Rasul Mitbog recalls that, uh, incident. But if my memory serves me right or the transcript of proceedings were allowed, then we should reflect the incident of that particular, uh, interpolation in order to justify further the strength of the motion for reconsideration by the Bago. So I hope the, that is just laying out the premise for an, uh, amendment to include in one of the whereasses that incident of the parliament's action. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, uh, to, uh, the good gentleman for bringing it out. I would remember that, um, as one of the, uh, um, forward actions that needs to be done, but, uh, nonetheless, uh, it was not translated into any resolutions. Uh, I think it will reinforce the, the idea brought out right now will reinforce this, uh, resolution.
Yes, Plurleader. Let, let her on your amendments. May I amend means no?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we terminate the period of interrogation and debate.
There is a motion to terminate the period of interrogation. Yuli she candid, there being no objection, the same is hereby approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendment.
Where do you put the amendments? What paragraph?
I realize the period because you have not ordered whether we add the period.
I moved.
This pa nga. I'm giving you, uh, guidance. Where do you put the amendments?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, Mr. Speaker, I would like to put the amendment in one of the whereasses.
Did you, uh, you open pang period of amendments?
Yes, I moved already, Mr. Speaker.
There is a motion to open the period of amendments. Yuli she candid, there being no objection, the same is hereby approved.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. As already admitted by the proponent that he's willing to accept an amendment, I propose that the incident on that particular date from the record of the transcript should be reflected in one of the whereasses. Whereas the parliament on that date, because I don't have the records already, on that date, then we can have the secretariat, uh, capture that to be included in the whereasses, Mr. Speaker.
Plus ice cream para makita 'yung, uh,
Makita.
Uh, intertext of the amendment.
I hope, uh, it was captured because I think it was a motion by MP Rasul Mitbog.
You know, hindi it, uh,
Wala dyan sa whereasses eh.
Ang problema, mabalikan natin 'yung minutes.
So I will just write, Mr. Speaker. I will state whereas.
Can you please restate the?
Yes, Mr. Speaker. The only problem, I say, I forgot the date of that session and particular, the session and the particular date. But perhaps it wa- it can be recalled by the secretariat because that is a product of our interpel- of the interpolation by Rasul Mitbog in the course of our, uh, uh, privileged speech, speeches. So I will just state that on such a state, uh, the session of the parliament dated, the parliament, uh, in the course of the interpolation raised a motion to direct the government of the day through the soli- through the attorney general to file a motion for reconsideration. That is just as good as that, Mr. Speaker. Only the date, I cannot, uh, exactly when was that interpolation, when date, what session was that of the parliament? Pardon my lapse already, senior citizen usually forget. But I cannot forget the substance of that, but the date, Mr. Speaker. So may we ask the help of our secretariat to look back into the transcript of proceedings? So the whereas on the session of the parliament number dated then, the mo- uh, four members of the parliament delivered a privileged speech. In the course of the interpolation by MP Rasul Mitbog, one of the, uh, moving forward action re- uh, recommended by the parliament was the pile, was for the filing of the motion for reconsideration by the Bago.
Subject to style? Huh? Yes, yes, uh, the, the prominent of the resolution may reply?
Yeah. I accept the, um, proposed amendment. However, Mr. Speaker, I think, uh, the placement, uh, should come before, uh, should follow, um, or should be placed before any of the motions, before the Bago's motion. Yeah. It should come first. Uh, so that, that whereas, then Bago, then the individual motions.
It is, Mr. Speaker.
Subject to style na lang.
I subject to style, Mr. Speaker, because the relevant of this, Mr. Speaker, is, you know, the filing was already da- done and this resolution will come after the filing. This cannot justify the lack of, uh, authority from the parliament in that motion. That can be, uh, served as a technical ground to dismiss our motion, yes.
One minute suspension. Resum.
Mr. Speaker, that's, uh, my amendment. So I think the proponent accepted that it should be included in the whereasses, but it should come before the motion by the Bago.
But the, uh, principal purpose of putting that statement because of the conversation previously, so is a matter of, uh, ano yun? Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yes.
Yeah, that, that is just to reflect the incidents of that session.
Yes, to reflect, to, to reflect only what was, uh, transpired during the previous session. And it's not an authority for the Bago to file the motion to intervene.
No, pasi na that file.
Mr. Speaker.
A motion.
Yes, Plurleader. Lol- Lolita.
Mr. Speaker.
Uh, gentleman from Landau del Suran Palawan, uh, wants to be recognized.
Mr. Speaker, we are in the period of interpolation, Mr. Speaker. I, I mean, uh, may we recognize MP Bago?
Thank you very much, uh, Madam Plurleader, Mr. Speaker. I, I just want to ask the gentleman from Sulu, the honorable, uh, MP Jolorina. Because while ago, he had made mention about, uh, an authority that if ever we will, uh, go through with this, uh, resolution, it seems that we are giving Bago that authority to file this motion for reconsideration. Now, to me, uh, it is disisperi- ano, uh, this is dangerous for, uh, the parliament because every time that we face, uh, some legal issue, uh, magbibigay tayo ng authority ngayon. So we cannot do it. What is the use of creating Bago if they cannot exercise their duties and responsibility uh, without, uh, asking the parliament to authorize them? I think, uh, it's really, you know, to me, ang paniniwala ko, hindi na siguro kailangan 'yan. Because that is the main function and, uh, uh, duties of Bago in case of any legal issue. Sila na 'yung, sila na 'yung, uh, may ano dyan. Why do we have to give them authority? I am just, uh, uh, reacting to the statement of, uh, MP Jolorina because, uh, in case there is going to be a future legal issue, does it mean that we, we also need another authority from the parliament, Mr. Speaker?
Uh, Mr. Speaker, perhaps the gentleman misunderstood by the saying that it can, it can be used as a technical issue if there is no expression from the parliament earlier, which incidentally has been done. That is a reflection only of the incident of that privileged speech and consequently, there was an interpolation and that interpolation out asks us to what is the moving forward. And the moving forward was already stated by the, by us in the interpolation that we can file a motion for reconsideration. That incident happened before the filing of the motion, but it doesn't necessarily mean that all cases, uh, we have to secure an authority, but we have to reflect the incident because.
Yes, I, I understand, uh, Deputy Plurleader, the purpose of putting up the, the statement is the, to reflect what was transpired during the previous, uh, session regarding the matter. So there is no problem if you wants to reflect what was transpired uh, during the previous season because that is already on record. It is in our journal.
Yes.
So this is no problem. That is not an authority itself.
Yeah.
That, that is not an authority itself.
Secondly, Mr. Speaker, it could happen in the future because while we are denying that, the fact remains that any issue could be raised by other, uh, opposition to the, uh, to such a petition. There will be a comment. So but to safeguard that, we want that incident reflected before in the, in the resolution, which was accepted by the proponent so that the incident that happened here is reflected because that is tantamount of saying that we also ask that a motion for extension be filed. Imagine that privileged speeches was delivered by us who are also from Sulu, but there was no indication that we had part of that, uh, incident and that we have not either moved for any uh, resolution to protect the province of Sulu. That would go bearing to all of us.
Mr. Speaker, I am just reacting to that statement that we are giving Bago that authority. To me, my belief is there's no need for them to give, uh, the authority. Number two, the motion for reconsideration has been filed uh, and now, uh, major late na 'yung authority that we are, we are, we are, uh, trying to give, uh, uh, because of this, uh, uh, you know, paragraph that is being, uh, uh, included as part of this resolution.
Mr. Speaker, this resolution pertains only for the expression of support to all motion for reconsideration irrespective of it was filed by the Bago and the other individual members of the parliament. This is an expression of support, but the parliament itself has already has an incident recorded that we manifested that if it is possible, we, on motion of, uh, MP Rasul Mitbog, when I asked, we said we can direct the government of the day, request the government of the day to ask the Bago to file a motion for reconsideration.
Mr. Speaker, I, I don't think there is an issue about this, uh, expression of support. What I'm just, uh, trying to bring it out is that, uh, that paragraph, uh, that will mean giving Bago that authority. Because to me, without that particular, uh, particular paragraph, it, this is already inherent within the power of Bago. They are already authorized by this parliament. We are the one who created Bago and they are supposed to perform the duties on, on legal matters. Hindi na siguro kailangan i-authorize para din sila.
Uh, ano, ah, with your respect to the Plurleader, Deputy Plurleader and the gentleman, uh, MP Alimuntawa Bawa, uh, we have already discussed that and I think, uh, uh, that matter has been resolved. Pwedeng ilagay 'yung statement, uh, as a reflection o patwas, uh, opinion during the previous session. So wala ng ibang, uh, statement doon.
Mr. Speaker, last point. Last point lang. Uh, I, ang, ang aking iniisip lang nito, we might be setting up a precedent that every time there's going to be a legal matter or legal issue that the parliament has to resolve, we will be forced to give Bago an authority.
And yeah.
And it is their power, that is a duty, you see, that is inherent with the creation. You see, that is inherent with the creation of Bago to perform, ah, ah, any legal issue to defend this parliament as far as, ah, a legal issue is concerned. Yun lang po ang akin concern.
Mr. Speaker, my last comment, my last comment, Mr. Speaker. Support the Attorney General of the arm. I know that there are functions of the solicited attorney general that, that, that can, that cannot be done without an authority from the parliament. There are. The disposition of property by the government cannot, it has to secure an authority, negotiation, unless we will cite all this. But I am not implying that we do that because we don't, we want to give authority, block authority to the, ah, Bago at this particular instance. But there are incidents that request the approval of the parliament, but I do not like to discuss that because my only purpose of proposing the amendment is to reflect that incident in the parliament. Otherwise, many of the incidents that have transpired that cannot be reflected is, will be useless. For example, our privileged speech, our, the motion to move forward, those are things that have been raised in this parliament. Imagine, we go with all this expression of support, I, I must be blocked. Then, the people of Sulu will, he, do not even know that there was a privileged speech that we have also have promi- promise to file a motion for recall.
What?
Well, afford that one minute suspension.
Five minutes suspension.
Mr. Speaker, ah, we thank MP Lorena, ah, for his openness to allow, ah, further amendment on, ah, his proposed amendment, Mr. Speaker. May we recognize MP Ramos.
MP Yamin Ramos is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Ah, can I request the secretary to flash the same whereas, ah, proposal? Mr. Speaker, if we are to remember, it was MP Attorney Rasul Mitmog who raised the motion ah, about not to direct but to recommend to government of the day through the Bangsa Moro Attorney General's office to file a motion for reconsideration, which MP Lorena accepted subject to style placed before motion clauses.
Ano? Bak- bakit tadi mo 'yung pangalan dito? Eh, eto ba 'yung, etong pagreplicate ng pangalan, eto ba sila? Kita ba? Recon- record ba 'yan?
And the word directly, Mr. Speaker, is, ah, should be to recommend.
It is not to direct, to recommend.
Yes, to recommend to the government of the day. Yes.
This is exact word.
Recommended.
To recommend.
Yeah, yeah, a motion.
To file.
Recommended. Recommended to the government of the day to file, to file a motion.
Mrs. Speaker, may I, ah, rephrase my wording, Mrs. Speaker, because I, um, there, ah, instead of, ah, raise a motion, ayun, re- raise a motion recommending to the government of the day. Yes, Mrs. Speaker. I think that sounds more... Nandyan na.
Umaba ng pangalan dito. Ano pang, dagdag na pangalan? Wag na, wag na, tago niyo na lang. Oh, i-accept po na.
Ah, proposed amendment accepted.
Eh, proposed amendment is accepted. Final na, wala ng galawan.
Meron pa isa. Sirs, rec- Mr. Speaker.
Ah, accepted na 'yun.
Can we recognize, ah, Deputy Speaker Semah who will also, ah, propose an amendment?
Ah, Deputy Speaker Romeo, ah, o, o, Marsey Maes recognized.
Ah, ah, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Ah, before, before I make the proposed amendment, I asked the, ah, proponent and the floor leader if I can make an amendment, and with their permission, they allowed me to make this proposal. I would like to move to delete the previous whereas clause before the new whereas clause, Mr. Chair. That one, Mr. Chair, whereas the Bangsa Moro Transition Authority as a, as the interim government of the bar must uphold the goal of the, of a united Bangsa Moro and guarantee the fulfillment of the obligations enshrined in the camp, enshrined in the camp because we cannot guarantee that, Mr. Chair. We can only fight for it, but we cannot guarantee it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Proposed amendment accepted.
Eh, proposed amendment is accepted. Secretary, please take note.
On that note, Mr. Speaker, I move that we terminate the period of amendment.
There is a motion to terminate the period of amendments. Yulisi kandit, there being no objection, the same is by approve.
I move that we approve proposed resolution number sixty-four-nine as amended and subject to style, Mr. Speaker.
There is a motion to approve, ah, proposed res- resolution number sixty-four-nine ah, as amended and subject to style. Yulisi kandit, there being no objection, the same is by approve.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Ah, for bills on second reading, we have committee report number ninety-five submitted by the Committee on Health and Committee on Finance and Budget and Management in relation to BTA Parliament Bill number one hundred twenty-three entitled an act creating and establishing the pura municipal hospital in the municipality of Datoblati Sinswat, Province of Magindano del Norte, Bangsa Moro Townmost Region in Muslimindenaw Barm, appropriating funds therefore and for other purposes. Authored by MP Balaintan, AM Patuan with co-authors MPs Romeo Semah, Suay Oranon, Amil Bahar Mawalil, Rasul Witmog Junior, Laysa Alamiya, Soharto Angguluto, Don Mustafa Loong, Rasul Ismael, Kalid Haji Abdullah, Jafar Apollo, Mikel Matalam, Basir Uto, Eddie Ali, Hashimi Dilanggalin, Mary Ann Arnado, Pais Salintago, Obay Napakasem, Susana Anayatin, Ahmad Abbas, Mosber Alaudin, Amrusi Makatanong, Ali Salik, City Pahani Es Uyoyod, Harun Abbas, Marjani Makasalong, Kadel Sinulinding, Troylin Mendoza, Hamid Malik, Dan Asnowi, Soharto Ismael, Abdullah Hashim, Jamel Makakuwa, Michael Midtimbang, Jamela Ramos, Said Sheikh, Muhammad Yakub and Hussein Pimonyos. Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the committee chair of the Committee on Health, MP Dr. Hashimi Dilanggalin to render the report.
The chair of the Committee on Health, ah, doctor, MP Dr. Hashimi Dilanggalin is recognized. Mahaba ba 'yan? Dear recognition, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Madam Floor Leader. Ah, as honorable speaker, Madam Floor Leader, my esteemed colleagues in the parliament, guests, ladies and gentlemen, nasalamo alay kumarakmatulahe, talaw barakato. I have the honor of reporting back to this August body the committee report number ninety-five of, on the Bangsa Moro Transition Authority Bill number one, two, three submitted by the Committee on Health and the Committee on Finance, Budget and Management on August fifteen, eh, August fifteen, October fifteen, twenty-twenty-four. The bill is entitled an act creating and stab- creating and establishing the pura municipal hospital in the municipality of Datoblati, Tisinswat, Province of Magindano del Norte, Bangsa Moro Townmost Region in Muslimindenaw, appropriating funds therefore and for other purposes. Before I will start my report, ah, Mr. Speaker, ah, I believe in the agenda, we have three hospitals in the bill. Ah, we have supposedly, this will be six, but the two bills regarding Mas- Maluso and Tipo Tipo is still referred in the, ah, PRS and Bago. Pag once ma-resolve po 'yun in Shala, it will be referred back here in the plenary. So, so, Mr. Speaker, ah, Datoblati Sinswat, a coastal municipality in Magindano del Norte within Barm, remains one of the most underserved regions in terms of healthcare access. The area is primarily composed of Magindanawan and Iranon communities. Not also Iranon, may Tausog din po doon, and one barangay in Datoblati Sinswat, ang barangay kaaptain po doon ay Tausog. The area is relying on fishing and small-scale agriculture. Despite its socio-cultural richness, the municipality faces challenges in accessing healthcare services due to geographical isolation and the lack of medical facilities. Currently, the municipality's healthcare services are limited to the under-resourced rural health units and the barangay health station which cannot cater to the growing medical needs of its populace, populace. One of the premieries of the people of Datoblati Sinswat is frequent flooding exacerbated by its coastal geography, geography and proximity to overflowing rivers during heavy rains. During the rainy seasons, roads connecting the municipality to neighboring areas including Cotabato City often become impossible, cutting off residents from vital aid and services. With many barangays accessible only by unpaved roads or boats, transportation routes are easily disrupted, leaving the community stranded for days or weeks without access to medical care, supplies or emergency services. This isolation combined with the absence of a local hospital creates critical health risk as residents experiencing medical emergencies such as childbirth complications, accidents or illnesses and face life-threatening delays in the treatment. Moreover, the region vulnev- vulnerability of social conflicts, including political tensions and armed violence further trap residents within the municipality as roadblocks and curfew and curfews limit mobility, making timely medical care even more difficult. The establishment of PMH will drastically reduce the travel time and cost for residents who otherwise need to seek medical assistance in Cotabato City or other urban centers. This will address both emergency and routine healthcare needs, ultimately improving the overhealth, overall health and socioeconomic conditions of the residents. The Committee on Health initiated public, a public hearing on July sixteen, twenty-twenty-four held at the Municipal Gymnasium Datoblati Sinswat, Magindano del Norte. The hearing was attended by local officials, health professionals, community representatives and stakeholders from civil society. Stakeholders shared their insights and expressed overwhelming support for the establishment of the hospital. After consolidating public inputs, the COH deliberated technical aspects of the BTA Bill number one, two, three. The series of committee deliberations involved a comprehensive review of the proposal, proposed hospitals, infrastructure, service capabilities and alignment with national healthcare standard set by the Department of Health. The COH considered the current healthcare landscape of Datoblati Sinswat analyzing data on healthcare accessibility, patient demographics and projected healthcare needs of the municipality. Subsequent discussions were held jointly with the CFBM to scrutinize the budgetary provisions and the financial sustainability of the proposed hospital. The committees agreed on the initial funding of fifty million pesos sourced from the miscellaneous and personal benefit fund of the twenty-twenty-five General Appropriation Act of the Bangsa Moro or GAAB with provisions for future expansion based on the performance evaluation conducted by the Ministry of Health. And the Committee on Finance, Budget and Management in their joint deliberation recommending BTA Bill number one, amendments in section three, the inclusion of the phrase barangay pura before the phrase municipality of Datoblati Sinswat to read as follows. Section three, creating pura medical hospital, pura municipal hospital to implement the above-mentioned policy, a hospital facility is hereby created and established to be known as the pura municipal hospital to be located in barangay pura municipality of Datoblati Sinswat, Magindano del Norte Barm. In section four, the amendments of this section to read as follows. Section four, creation of pura municipal hospital. The pura municipal hospital shall have at least twenty-five beds following the minimum national standards and guidelines set by the Department of Health. The hospital shall be equipped and operational in accordance with these standards. The hospital shall be equipped and operational in accordance with these standards. Future upgrades to expand the hospital's capacity shall be considered based on evaluations and recommendations by the Ministry of Health. In section eight, the amendment of this section to read as section eight appropriations and initial day to carry out provisions of this act shall be and the miscellaneous and personal benefit fund of the twenty twenty five General Appropriation Act of the Bangsa Moro or GAAB thereafter, funds the necessary, funds necessary for the operations of the hospital shall be included in the annual appropriations. As part of the, the reporting documents for your reference, BTA Bill Number One Two Three introduced by the author attached as is attached at as Annex B, COH report on BTA Bill Number One Two Three attached as Annex C and the budgetary requirements for hospital provided by the Ministry of Health attached as Annex D. In conclusion, Mr. Chair, the Committee on Health and the Committee on Finance, Budget and Management, to which the BTA Bill Number One Two Three was referred, have carefully considered the proposed legislation and after thorough deliberation, we recommended its approval with aforementioned amendments. Thank you. And wassalamu alaykum wrakmatullahi talaw barakatu.
May Komisalam, Floor Leader.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. On account of the um, series of committee reports to be reported by the Committee on Health and the Committee on Finance and Budget and Management, um, please allow the us to move on with the committee report number ninety-six. Also by the committee, uh, submitted by the Committee on Health and the Committee on Finance and Budget and Management in relation to BTA Parliament Bill Number One Hundred Thirty Nine, entitled an act establishing in the Municipality of Northern Kabuntalan, Province of Magindano del Norte, a level-one general hospital to be known as the Northern Kabuntalan General Hospital and appropriating funds therefore authored by MPs Hashimi Dilanggalen, Eddie Ali and Bay Intan Nampatuwan. Co-authored by MPs Soharto Ismail, Amil Bahar Mawalil, Nabila Margarita Pangandaman, Mary Ann Arnado, Pay Salintago Obay Dapakasem, Susana Anayatin, Ahmad Abbas, Masber Alaudin, Amru Si Makatanong, Ali Salik, Siti Fahani Es Uyoyod, Harun Abbas, Abbas, Marjani Makasalong, Kadel Sinulinding Junior, Frailin Mendoza, Hamid Malik, Dan Asnawi, Abdullah Hashim, Jamel Makakuwa, Michael Midtimbang, Jamila Ramos, Said Sheikh, Muhammad Yakub, Ali Montaha Babau and Hussein Munyos. Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize once again the Chair of the Committee on Health, Doctor, MP Dr. Hashimi Dilanggalen.
Thank you.
Again, we recognize uh, MP Dr. Rasimi Dilanggalen for another round of sponsorship speech.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and also thank you, uh, Madam Floor Leader. Honorable Speaker, Madam Floor Leader, my esteemed colleagues in the Parliament, guests, ladies and gentlemen, asalamu alaykum wrakmatullahi talaw barakatu. I have the honor of reporting back to this August body, the committee report number ninety-six. On the Bangsa Moro Transition Authority Bill Number One Three Nine, submitted by the Committee on Health and the Committee on Finance, Budget and Management on fifteenth, October fifteen, twenty twenty four, the bill is entitled an act establishing in the Municipality of Northern Kabuntalan, Province of Magindano del Norte, a level-one general hospital to be known as the Northern Kabuntalan Municipal Hospital and appropriating funds therefore. Northern Kabuntalan is a fifth-class municipality located in the Province of Magindano del Norte. Within the Bangsa Morotonmus Region Muslim in Mindanao. The municipality is home to approximately twenty-six thousand residents and is characterized by its location in the flood plain of the Pulangi River. This geographical setting makes Northern Kabuntalan prone to seasonal flooding, which affects the day-to-day life of its inhabitants, particularly in terms of transportation, agriculture and access to essential services. The economy of Northern Kabuntalan is predominantly agriculture, agricultural with residents primarily engaged in rice farming and fishing. However, the recurring floods pose significant challenges to agricultural productivity, infrastructure and overall economic development. These environmental conditions contribute to the municipality's economic struggle and the limited availability of basic services, including healthcare. Imagine, Mr. Speaker, ang bahap po sa kanila ay isang norm na lang. Healthcare access in Northern Kabuntalan is severely limited. The primary, the primary healthcare provider in the area is the Rural Health Unit, which, while staffed by dedicated doctors and health workers, is only equipped to offer basic services such as routine checkups, basic treatments and pregnancy deliveries. There are issue lacks facilities and resources needed to manage more serious health conditions, leaving residents with few options for advanced medical care. In emergency cases requiring specialized care, residents must travel long distance to hospitals nearby cities such as Cotabato City, Midsayap or Kidapawan with travel times ranging from one to three hours. This journey involves using makeshift transportation like habal-habal boats or those living near river or even tractors reflecting the lack of reliable transportation infrastructure in the area. The delays in receiving medical attention due to these long travel times can have life-threatening consequences, especially for patients with severe health condition such as complicated pregnancies, chronic disease like diabetes and hypertension or emergencies like severe danger cases. Recognizing the importance of public engagement of in the legislative process, the Committee on Health initiated a public hearing on August eighth, twenty twenty-four in Northern Kabuntalan. And I'm proud to say that time, yun po yung may pinakamaraming uh, representative, pinakamaraming participants ng public consultation. Following the public hearing, the COH conducted internal deriva- internal deliberations to discuss the technical aspects of hospital construction, including its capacity, location and required medical equipment. These deliberations also considered the municipality's specific healthcare needs such as maternal care, treatment for chronic illnesses and emergency response capabilities, even in the geographical constraints. Upon finalizing this technical discussion, a joint committee hearing between the COH and the Committee on Finance, Budget and Management was held. The focus of this joint committee, joint session was the budgetary requirements necessary to establish as well as its long-term sustainability. Both committees work in close coordination to ensure the hospital's budget would be sufficient to cover construction, staffing and ongoing operational costs while also aligning with the regional, region's fiscal priorities. The Committee on Health and Committee on Finance Bud- Budget and Management in their joint deliberation recommending BTA Bill Number One Three Nine following the amendments, following amendments in the title, the phrase Northern Kabuntalan Municipal Hospital shall be changed as the Northern Kabuntalan General Hospital. Henceforth, the title shall be read, shall be read as an act establishing in the Municipality of Northern Kabuntalan, Province of Magindano del Norte, a level-one general hospital to be known as the Northern Kabuntalan General Hospital and appropriating funds therefore. In section two, inclusion of the title establishment of the Northern Kabuntalan General Hospital. And change the word fifty to twenty-five and change the word municipal to general. Henceforth, ano ulit na to. Henceforth, the establishment of Northern Kabuntalan General Hospital shall be established a level-one general hospital with twenty-five bed capacity in the Municipality of Northern Kabuntalan to be known as Northern Kabuntalan General Hospital. Section two is amended to read as section two administration and supervision, the NKGH shall be under the administration and supervision of the Bangsa Morotonmus Region Muslim Mindanao Ministry of Health, which is hereby authorized to determine and approve the organizational structure for the effective and efficient management and operation of the hospital. The BARMOH shall formulate the necessary guideline for its operation as a level, level-one hospital and ensure funding for the construction of the, of the hospital building and other complementary infrastructures, facilities and medical equipment, as well as the cost for the necessary maintenance and personal services. Number four, section three shall be amended. Section three site determination. The MH Barn in coordination with the LGU of the Municipality of Northern Kabuntalan shall jointly determine the site of the hospital in the consult- in consultation with the local government units in the Province of Magindano del Norte and other relevant stakeholders. Number five, section four shall be amended. Section four formulation of operational guidelines, the MH Barn shall lock likewise within ninety days after the effectivity of this act formulate the necessary guidelines for the operation of the NKMH. The MH Barn shall assume full responsibility for the financial management of the NKGH, including the budget allocation, procurement and expenditures. A phased transition plan shall be developed and implemented to gradually transfer the financial administration and management to the, of the NKGH to the local government unit. The transition shall occur in stages with benchmarks established to assess the LGU's capacity to handle financial operations effectively. The may, the MH Barn shall conduct regular evaluation to determine whether the LGU has demonstrated sufficient financial management capacity include, including compliance with the account standards, efficient procurement practices and budgetary discipline. Full financial control over NKGH shall be transferred to the LGU upon the successful completion of assessment focused on the local governance, accountability and the sustain- sustainability of healthcare service delivery. Number six, inclusion of section five. Section five appropriation, an initial amount of fifty million pesos necessary to carry out the provisions. Provision of this act shall be charged against the miscellaneous and personal benefit fund of the twenty twenty-five General Appropriation Act of the Bangsa Moro. Thereafter, funds necessary for the operations of the hospital shall be included in the annual appropriation. Number seven, uh, inclusion title separability clause in sections six repealing clause and, and effectiveness in section eight. As part of this committee report, we have also attached several documents for plene- plenary reference. A BTA Bill Number One Three Nine as introduced by the author attached at as Annex A, BTA Bill Number One Three Nine with amendment attached as Annex B, C COH comprehensive report on BTA Bill Number One Three Nine attached as Annex C and budgetary requirements for hospitals provided by the Ministry of Health attached as Annex D. In conclusion, Mr. Chair, the Committee on Health and the Committee on Finance, Budget and Management, to which BTA Bill Number One Three Nine was referred, have carefully considered the proposed legislation and after thorough deliberation, we can recommend it.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Uh, the next committee report still to be delivered by the good uh, member of the Parliament and Chair of the Committee on Health is committee report number ninety-seven. In relation to BTA Parliament Bill Number Two Hundred Fifty Seven entitled an act creating and establishing a level-one general hospital to be known as Aleem Abdullah Ziz Es Mimbantas Memorial Hospital in the Municipality of Masyu, Province of Magin- of Lano del Sur and appropriating funds therefore and for other purposes authored by members of the Parliament Said Sheikh, Ali Montaha Babau, Amru Si Makatanong, Abdullah Makabaar, Basit Abbas, Marjani Makasalong, Nabila Pangandaman and Ali Soleiman. Co-authored by members of the Parliament Eddie Ali, Hashimi Dilanggalen, Mary Ann Arnado, Pay Salintago, Obay Dapakasem, Susana Anayatin, Ahmad Abbas, Masber Alaudin, Ali Sa- Salik, Siti Fahani Uyoyod, Harun Abbas, Kadel Sinulinding Junior, Frailin Mendoza, Hamid Malik, Dan Asnawi, Soharto Ismail, Abdullah Hashim, Jamel Makakuwa, Michael Midtimbang, Jamila Ramos, Muhammad Yakub and Hussein Pimonyos. Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize once again the Chair of the Committee on Health, MP Dr. Hashimi Dilanggalen to deliver the report.
Again, we recognize uh, MP Hashimi Dilanggalen for another sponsorship message. Uh, for the committee report number, pagod ka na?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Speaker for recognizing me again and Madam Floor Leader. Uh, okay. Iton pala, sorry. Okay, uh, once again, I am honor of reporting back to this August body, the committee report on BTA Bill Number, uh, committee report number ninety-seven on the Bangsa Moro Transition Authority Bill Number Two Five Seven, submitted by the Committee on Health and the Committee on Finance, Budget and Management on October fifteen, twenty twenty-four, the bill is entitled an act creating and establishing a level-one general hospital to be known as Aleem Abdullah Ziz Es Mimbantas Memorial Hospital in the Municipality of Masyu, Province of Lano del Sur and appropriating funds therefore and for other purposes. The Municipality of Masyu is located in the Province of Lano del Sur situated within the Bangsa Morotonmus Region Muslim in Mindanao. The municipality is bordered by other municipalities within the Lano del Sur and is close proximity to Lake Lanau, the largest lake in Mindanao. Access to healthcare in Masyu, like many areas in Lano del Source, Lano del Sur faces significant challenges. The municipality is relatively remote with the limited infrastructure connecting it to major urban centers. This remoteness contributes to difficulties in accessing healthcare facilities as well as delays in the provision of medical supplies and services. The healthcare facilities within Masu are limited, often constrained by a lack of medical equipment, healthcare professionals and essential medicine. Residents often rely on rural health units or barangay health station for their medical needs which can only provide basic services and are open ill-equipped to handle more serious conditions. For more specialized care, residents must travel to Marawi City or other neighboring areas which can be time-consuming and costly. The proposed bill seek to address the critical healthcare needs of the residents of Masu and neighboring municipalities by establishing a level-one general hospital. The rationale behind this initiative is rooted in the severe shortage, shortage of healthcare facilities in Lano del Sur, where the existing hospital bed to population ratio is significantly below the national standard. The bill aims to provide accessible and affordable healthcare to underserved communities, alleviate the burden on existing hospitals and improve overall public health outcomes in the region, region. The Committee on Health initiated a public hearing on August fourteen, twenty twenty-four at the Meranau Cultural Heritage Center, Mindanao State, State University, Marawi City. This hearing presi- presided over by COH Vice Chairperson, MP Marjani Es Makasalong, provided a platform for various stakeholders, including healthcare profi- professionals, local leaders and residents to voice their concerns and insights regarding the healthcare challenges in Masu. Following the public hearing, the CH, the COH deliberated on the technical aspect of the bill, considering the med- considering the medical needs, population data, and healthcare deficiencies in the region. Subsequently, the CFDM and COH held joint discussions to evaluate the financial feasibility and vegetary requirements. The joint committee agreed on the appropriation necessary to ensure the immediate establishment and operation of the hospital. The Committee on Health and Committee on Finance, Budget, Management, in their joint deliberation recommending BTA Bill number two-five-seven. Following amendments, section four shall be amended. Section four appropriation, an initial amount of fifty million pesos necessary to carry out provisions of this act shall be charged again the miscellaneous and personal benefit fund of the 2025 General Appropriation Act of the Bangsa Moro. Thereafter, funds necessary for the operations of the hospital shall be included in the annual appropriations. These fifty million will serve as the initial funding to kick-start the hospital construction and procure essential medical equipment. It is projected that further funding will be required for the hospital operations, staffing, and additional medical supplies, which will be integrated into the GAAP in subsequent years. As part of this committee report, we have also attached several supporting documents for your reference. A, BTA Bill number two-five-seven as introduced by the author attached as annex A. B, BTA Bill number two-five-seven with amendments attached as annex B. C, COH Comprehensive Report on BTA Bill number two-five-seven attached as annex C. And letter D, vegetary requirements for hospitals provided by the Ministry of Health attached as annex D. In conclusion, the Committee on Health and the Committee on Finance, Budget, and Management, to which BTA Bill number two-five-seven was referred, have carefully considered the proposed legislation, and after thorough deliberation, we recommend its approval with aforementioned amendments. Thank you, and wassalamu'alaikum wrakmatullahi talaw barakatuhu.
Floor Leader.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I move on that note, Mr. Speaker, we have already heard the three committee reports from the Committee on Health and the Committee on Finance and Budget and Management. I move that we adopt... I would like to make an omnibus motion to adopt the three committee reports, Mr. Speaker, for purposes of deliberation separately.
There is a motion to adopt the three previous committee reports reported by the Chair of the Committee on Health for deliberation. It's been seconded, hearing objection, the motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, to facilitate the order of interpolations, may I request a show of hands from the members of the parliament who wish to interpolate? It's good to see only one hand raised, Mr. Speaker. I therefore move that we open the period of interpolation and debate on Committee Report number ninety-five, BTA Parliament Bill number one-two-three.
There is a motion from the floor to all of those committee reports. There is a motion from the floor to open the period of interpolation debate. Hearing the second, hearing objection, the motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize MP Roylin Mendoza.
The lady from Datoblasin Swat, Magindano del Norte is recognized.
Maraming salamat, Mr. Speaker.
Magindano del Norte.
At marami ring salamat, Floor Leader. I approve ako ng Committee on Health. Pero meron lang akong mga katanungan sa aming mahalagang Chair ng Committee on Health. Magulagap ako ito, Mr. Speaker, dahil kung makikita natin doon sa findings of the committee, which I wanted to clarify, because it was only mentioned that the area is primarily composed of Magindano and Iranon communities. We all knew for a fakka, Mr. Speaker, na 'yung Datoblasin Swat ay kinalalagyan rin ang ating mga Teduray community. Kaya nga po, sabi ko, naalala ko sa kinimi, sa lapakin, sa matubir, sa nalkaan, sa pinansaran, sa lahat ng barangay ay meroon tayong mga Teduray community. At noong public consultation namin, Mr. Speaker, nandoon din 'yung ating mga Teduray community at sila pangayong nagdasal para sa IP. So, ang aking kahilingan sa aming Chair ng Committee na maisali 'yung Teduray community dahil mahalaga ang dokumento na ito at mababasa ito, Mr. Speaker. Yun lang po.
Yes, ah, may I respond?
You don't have to comment if you are not required to comment.
But I think I need to comment on that.
Proceed.
This representation is apologizing to the whole IP communities in the municipality of Datoblasin Swat, where the barangays mentioned by the esteemed Member Parliament na mayroon pa palang ibang IP members doon na nakaste sa Datoblasin Swat municipality, which is the Tedurais.
That all? If there are no more interpolators, Floor Leader, proceed to terminate the period of interpolation.
Thank you for the guidance, Mr. Speaker. I move that we terminate the period of interpolation and debate.
There is a motion from the floor to terminate the period of interpolation debate. It's been seconded, hearing no objection, the motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I would like to now make an omnibus motion to dispense with a period of amendments on all three committee reports.
There is a motion, there is an omnibus motion to dispense with a period of amendment with the three, of the three committee reports, three proposed resolution, proposed bills. Hearing no objection, the motion is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move that we approve on second reading the three committee reports separately, Mr. Speaker, this time, by viva votcha vote.
Yes, can you just state the motion for viva votcha voting on each of the proposed bills?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move that we vote on second reading by viva votcha vote, BTA Parliament Bill number one-hundred-and-twenty-three as embodied in Committee Report number ninety-five, Mr. Speaker. Entitled?
Yes, there is... There is a motion from the floor to approve BTA Parliament Bill number one-two-three entitled "An Act Creating and Establishing the Pura Municipal Hospital in the Municipality of Datoblasin Swat, Province of Magindano del Norte, Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region in Muslim Mindanao, Appropriating Funds Therefore and for Other Purposes," on second reading. Any second? The, it's been seconded, hearing objection, we will proceed with the viva votcha voting. All of those who are in favor of BTA Parliament Bill number one-two-three say aye. Those who are against it say nay. The ayes have it, BTA Parliament Bill number one-two-three is approved on second reading.
Next, Mr. Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading Committee, BTA Parliament Bill number one-hundred-and-thirty-nine as embodied in Committee Report number ninety-six, Mr. Speaker.
There is a motion from the floor to approve on second reading BTA Parliament Bill number one-three-nine entitled "An Act Establishing in the Municipality of Northern Kabuntalan, Province of Magindano del Norte, a Level-One General Hospital to be Known as the Northern Kabuntalan General Hospital, and Appropriating Funds Therefore." Any second? Hearing objection, we will proceed with the viva votcha voting. All of those who are in favor of BTA Parliament Bill number one-three-nine say aye. All of those who are against say nay. The ayes have it, BTA Parliament Bill number one-three-nine is approved on second reading.
Next, Mr. Speaker, I move that we approve on second reading BTA Parliament Bill number two-hundred-and-fifty-seven as embodied in Committee Report number ninety-seven, Mr. Speaker, by viva votcha voting.
There is a motion from the floor once again to approve on second reading BTA Parliament Bill number one-two-five-seven, "An Act Creating and Establishing a Level-One General Hospital to be Known as Alim Abdulaziz Esmimbantas Memorial Hospital in the Municipality of Masyu, Province of Lano del Sur, and Appropriating Funds Therefore and for Other Purposes." Any second? Hearing no objection, we will proceed with the viva votcha voting. All of those who are in favor of BTA Parliament Bill number two-five-seven say aye. All of those who are against say nay. The nays are silent. BTA Parliament Bill number two-five-seven is approved on second reading.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. We move to Committee Report number ninety-nine submitted by the Committee on Rules in relation to proposed Resolution number three-hundred-and-fifteen entitled "The Resolution Expressing Support for the Immediate Passage of Senate Bill number two-hundred-and-eight-one-seven entitled 'An Act Strengthening the Independence of the Commission on Elections, Amending for the Purpose Pertinent Provisions of Batas Pambansa Bilang VIII-Eight-One,' otherwise known as the Omnibus Election Code, as amended, Providing Funds Therefore and for Other Purposes, Seeking to Strengthen the Field Offices of the Commission on Elections (Komelek), including the Bangsa Moro Electoral Office." Author: MP Don Mustafa A. Loong. Co-authors: MPs Ly Sa Alamiya, Bay Intan Ampatuhan, Rasul Mithmog Jr., Emil Bahar Mualil, Suarto Ambuluto, Rasul Ismail, Benjamin Loong, Jafar Apolo Mikael, Matalam, Abdul Karim Iswari, Joselo Rena, Abdulaziz Amenoden, Jamila Ramos, Azfar Osman, Muhammad Kelly Antao, Eddie Ali, Tawakal Midtimbang, Mujib Abu, Swaeb Oranon, Basir Di Uto, Bay Malehakan Dao, Michael Midtimbang, and Matarul Estino. Mr. Speaker, one minute suspension.
One minute suspension.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Chair of the Committee on Rules to render Committee Report number ninety-nine in relation to proposed Resolution three-one-five.
The Chair of the Committee on Rules is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, esteemed colleagues and fellow public servants. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuhu. As Chairperson of the Committee on Rules, I am pleased to present four reports today. The first is Committee Report number ninety-nine on BTA Proposed Resolution number three-hundred-and-fifteen, which expresses support for the immediate passage of Senate Bill number two-hundred-and-eight-one-seven entitled "An Act Strengthening the Independence of the Commission on Elections, Amending for the Purpose Pertinent Provisions of Batas Pambansa Bilang VIII-Eight-One, otherwise known as the Omnibus Election Code, as amended, Providing Funds Therefore and for Other Purposes." This resolution was initially introduced by MP Don Mustafa A. Loong to support the reorganization of the Commission on Elections or Komelek and the reclassification of its plantilia positions to strengthen its field offices. The developments regarding Senate Bill number eight... Number eight-five-seven were closely monitored during our committee deliberations. However, with the recent progress in the Senate, it has now been consolidated into Senate Bill number two-eight-one-seven through Senate Committee Report number three-one-eight, filed on September eleven, twenty-twenty-four. In a meeting held on June five, twenty-twenty-four, our subcommittee, led by a member of the parliament, Matarul Estino, conducted a thorough discussion on the merits of the resolution and the need for this legislative support. The subcommittee had attorney Joyce Moran from the Komelek Bangsa Moro Electoral Office, or BEO, as a resource person. She provided valuable insights into the challenges faced by the collection officers, particularly concerning their current salary grades, which range from salary grade fourteen to salary grade fifteen, and the upcoming responsibilities they will shoulder for the forthcoming parliamentary elections. Attorney Moran highlighted that the proposed reorganization and the upgrading of plantilia positions within the Komelek would greatly benefit the institution, allowing it to be more, to more effectively manage its responsibilities, especially in preparation for significant electoral activities. In light of these, the Committee on Rules has carefully considered the proposal and recommended amendments to update the resolution. Notably, the reference to Senate Bill number eight-five-seven has been updated to reflect Senate Bill number two-eight-one-seven, which aims to bolster the independence of the Komelek and strengthen its field offices, including the Bangsa Moro Electoral Office. Based on the deliberations and updated information, the Committee on Rules recommends the approval of BTA Proposed Resolution number three-one-five, as amended, to support the immediate passage of Senate Bill number two-eight-one-seven. This measure aims to strengthen the electoral process by ensuring that Komelek and its field offices, including those within the Bangsa Moro region, are adequately equipped to fulfill their mandates. The enhancement will be achieved through the reorganization of positions and improvements to the field offices. Thank you, and I respectfully submit this report for the approval of this August body.
Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we adopt Committee Report number ninety-nine, Committee Report number ninety-nine.
For deliberation. For deliberation. There is a motion from the floor to adopt Committee Report number ninety-nine for deliberation. Any second? Hearing objection, the motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of interpolation.
There is a motion from the floor to open the period of interpolation. It's been seconded, the motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, considering that there is no member of the parliament who signified any intention to interpolate, I move that we close the period of interpolation.
There is a motion to terminate the period of interpolation. It's been seconded, the motion is approved.
And, Mr. Speaker, considering the last action, I move that we open and close the period of amendments.
There is a motion from the floor to terminate the, to dispense with the period of amendment. It's been seconded, the motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we approve Committee Report number ninety-five.
There is a motion from the floor to approve, proposed Resolution number three-one-five embodied in Committee Report number ninety-nine. It's been seconded, hearing objection, the proposed Resolution number three-one-five is approved by the BTA plenary.
Mr. Speaker, we move on to Committee Report number one-hundred, also submitted by the Committee on Rules. I move that we recognize the Chair of the Committee on Rules to render said report.
The, there is, the Chair of the Committee on Rules is recognized for Committee Report number one-hundred.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The second report for today from the Committee on Rules is Committee Report number one-hundred, which pertains to BTA Proposed Resolution number ninety-eight. The resolution introduced by MP Engineer Bay Intan Adil Ampatuhan, co-authored by several members, seeks to request the Mindanao Development Authority, or MINDA, to update the Bangsa Moro Transition Authority, or BTA Parliament, on the status of the implementation of the Mindanao River Basin Master Plan, with a particular focus on its identified priority development programs and projects. The resolution was referred to Subcommittee Number Five, chaired by MP Matarul Estino, to thoroughly review the measure. During the subcommittee's meeting on June five, twenty-twenty-four, MP Ampatuhan emphasized the importance of the Mindanao River Basin, which is the largest river basin in the country, encompassing parts of regions ten, twelve, and the Bangsa Moro. The master plan for the river basin was developed to ensure its long-term rehabilitation and sustainable development. Despite an invitation to the MINDA for comments on the resolution, no response was received from their office. However, the subcommittee deliberated on the significance of the plan and its potential impact, especially as the rainy season approached, which could lead to flooding, destruction of infrastructure, and loss of lives and properties. which could lead to flooding, destruction of infrastructure, and loss of lives and properties. After careful consideration, the Subcommittee approved proposed resolution number ninety-eight without amendments, recognizing the urgency of receiving updates on the implementation of the Mindanao River Basin Master Plan. These updates are crucial for the parliament to develop appropriate policy measures and provide legislative support to ensure the success of the plan's implementation. Following its approval at the co- Subcommittee level, the resolution was elevated to the Mother Committee of the Committee on Rules where it was deliberated and adopted during the twenty ninth Committee Meeting on October eighteen, twenty twenty-four. In conclusion, the Committee on Rules recommends the approval of BTA proposed resolution number ninety-eight without amendments. This resolution will allow the BTA Parliament to be fully informed on the status of the Mindanao River Basin Master Plan and enable us to take legislative action to support its continued development. Thank you and I respectfully I respectfully submit this report for the approval of this honorable body.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we appro- uh, adopt committee report number one hundred for interpolation.
A motion from the floor to adopt committee report number one hundred for deliberation. It's been seconded, the motion is approved. Floor leader, considering I, just determine first if there are in- uh, interpolators?
Colleagues, if there are uh interpolators kindly make uh tell me so that we can uh open the period of interpolation. Considering that there is no uh member of the parliament interested in um interpolating, Mr. Speaker, I move that we dispense with the periods of interpolation as well as um, the period of amendments.
There is a motion from the floor to uh dispense with the period of interpolation and amendment. It's been seconded, the motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we approve proposed resolution number ninety-eight as embodied, subject to style as embodied in committee report number one hundred.
There is a motion from the floor to approve committee report number
Proposed Resolution Ninety-Eight.
Proposed Resolution Number Ninety-Eight, subject to style. Any second? Hearing no objection, the motion is approved. One minute suspension. Session resumes.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we again recognize the Chair of the Committee on Rules uh for the, for committee report number one oh one.
The Chair of the Committee on Rules is recognized to report on uh BTA pro- proposed resolution number five hundred.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Speaker and the floor leader. Uh, this or- originally, this committee report which pertains to BTA proposed resolution number five hundred uh has already been um resolved to, to have a recommendation to convert the resolution into a commendatory message to be delivered by the principal author in plenary, Mr. Speaker, and uh on such basis uh the committee withdraws the report, Mr. Speaker.
Well, is there a need to file a motion on that or what? To withdraw? Can you just move for the withdrawal?
Mr. Speaker.
Or the floor leader can move for the withdrawal of the uh, of the committee report?
Mr. Speaker, I move that uh for the withdrawal of committee report number one oh one considering the circumstances pertaining to the subject matter.
There is a motion from the floor to withdraw uh the report on proposed resolution number one hundred one. Any second? Hearing no objection, the motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move to suspend the session until one PM tomorrow.
There is a motion from the floor to suspend the session until one PM tomorrow. Any second? Hearing no objection, the session is suspended until one o'clock in the afternoon tomorrow.
Thank you.